Okay.
Okay.
Call to all this meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. I'll call roll.
Bob, we can't hear anything there.
Ms. Gadson?
Yes.
Ms. Steagle?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Here.
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 You still can't hear anything?
I mean, I do.
I hear you when I bring the thing down.
Can you hear us?
I still don't hear us.
You still don't hear us, Dr. Hall?
Nod your head when you can hear us. Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Kevin connects to YouTube. Is there a delay?
Is there a delay?
He's still can't hear you.
Can you hear us?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Can you hear us?
Nope.
Nope.
No response.
Uh...
All right, I can hear you now.
Can you hear us now?
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, cool. We got it.
The little Horizon commercial. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me now?
All right.
All right. We need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Uh, we would like to add an item to board. Items, that's number six. So, uh, we will be adding a D. That would be the addition of opposition to House Bill 582. That is the, um, resolution that... Is... The House is trying to make it so that school board terms move from four years to two. That you can have a maximum of four terms and that they make school board members declare their party, making them partisan, making federal employees ineligible to serve on school boards. And so, this was the, um, House Bill that I referenced last week, last month. And, um, this is a resolution that has been used in North Olmsted and Midview already. Um, so a number of school districts are lining up now to express opposition to this idea. And, yes. And then the other suggested change is removal of the executive session given the change. That's item number 10. I guess 10 and a... Well, I guess, yes, just 10. No returning to regular session either.
Ah, okay.
There's no zoning, so no executive session necessary. Are there any other suggested changes to the agenda this evening?
All right, call the roll.
Ms. Gadson?
Yes.
Ms. Steagle?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes. Citizens' concerns on items on today's agenda.
I don't know if I've ever received any reports.
I guess we should note that Dr. Hall is connecting to us from Florida. So he's two-dimensional this month. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to news of notes. Dr. Hall?
Dr. Hall?
On behalf of, um, tonight, I can't see, but I think Tammy Koleski is there. So, um, on behalf of Oberlin City Schools, I'd like to thank Tammy Koleski for providing our students with clothes and seasonal baskets. Our students and families appreciate her generosity. Um, she has provided numerous amount of winter clothes, summer clothes for our students, from shirts and shoes, um, to gloves and socks, to, um, seasonal baskets for our students for drives. Um, she's been very active and supportive at the district. And, um, tonight, we would like to honor and tell her thank you on behalf of the board and also behalf of the Oberlin City School District. I'm not sure if Tammy's there, but she would like to say a few words.
She's actually not here.
Okay, I can't see.
Yeah. Sorry. Camera's not facing the room.
Okay. Um, but we'd like to acknowledge her for her generosity that she's done. Um, I know, Anne, you mentioned it before, how, what a great job she's been doing.
Yeah. I, I, I think the thing that is, like, most remarkable to me and that brought it to the attention, that I even brought to Melissa, too, and that is her generosity is responsive. So she's not just finding a bunch of things out there and giving them whether we need it or not, but she's finding out what it is that, that, that the kids in our district need and providing that, exactly that kind of support. So it's, it's extremely generous, remarkable, creative, and it, another example of why it takes a community to help, uh, us, help our kids thrive pre-K through 12, and our teachers and employees all succeed. So thank you, Tammy. Thank you every, for our wonderful supportive community, but specifically what Tammy has been bringing to this district now for a number of months.
Mm-hmm. Next, we would like to, Gun Safety Initiative, Laura Irving. I believe she should be present to provide some information.
Yes.
Okay. She would like to write, um, a presentation on gun safety, uh, Gun Safety Initiative for the district.
Go ahead, Laura.
Yes.
I think...
I think that to the first slide. So I wanted to thank y'all for letting me talk about our Be Smart program. I would love to be a part of the gun safety team.
Nonpartisan organization that started after the Sandy Hook, uh, shooting. We have gun owners in our organization. We have non-gun owners in our association. And we're not just moms, we're mothers and others. We say that we have men that are man enough to be a mom. So I'd like to tell you about our Be Smart program. And then I'd like to ask y'all about a resolution that you could do to help with safe storage for guns. As this slide shows, more than 1,600 children under the age of 18 are killed every year in the United States by guns. And that's an average of five children every day. And 53% are homicides, 900, um, which would be 900 children. Another 700 die by firearm suicide each year. And 90 are unintentionally shot. So that's a child that's finding a gun and accidentally shooting themselves or shooting someone else. So we hear a lot about the school shootings that happen. And 80% of the school shootings that happen, the shooter has gotten the gun from home or from a friend or a family member. So one of the things that we're really going to be talking about today is secure storage. If we would secure our guns, incidents like this wouldn't happen. So, um, one of the things that we want, we really want to do with Be Smart, because we do have Republicans who are in our organization. We have Democrats, we have independents. Um, we want to leave the politics out of this and leave that, leave the politics at the door. And we can agree on three things. Uh, we want our children to grow up happy and healthy. Uh, we want to make responsible decisions on how we protect our homes and our families. And every situation is, you know, going to be different. And, um, if we can just prevent one child from dying in gun violence, then that's our responsibility to do that. And, um, this gun violence problem is, um, an American problem that we have. Uh, we have shootings at schools. We have, um, people, little kids that find guns and, um, shoot their friend or their sibling or themselves. The first thing a kid does, a young kid does, when they find a gun, they take it and they turn around and they're wondering what's in that hole? What's down there? And their, their thumb hits the trigger and then they're gone. We also have, um, kids in junior high and high school who are afraid. They think they, maybe they need a gun to protect themselves. And then we have impulsive tragedies where maybe a girlfriend breaks up with a boyfriend or, uh, they make a bad grade at school or parents are getting divorced and they're depressed and they have access to a gun and then they die by gun suicide. So what we're asking people to do is to be smart with their guns. We want people to secure their guns. We want them to model responsible behavior. We want them to ask about unsecured guns in homes of others. Uh, we want them to recognize, um, the role of guns in suicide. And then we want to tell our communities about these things. So S, uh, secure your guns in your homes and your vehicles. 13 million households with children's contain at least one gun. 5.4 of those, uh, we believe, are guns that are unsecured and they're loaded. So what we want people to do is we want them to lock their guns up, uh, either with a cable lock or in a case. And they need to be unloaded when they're locked up. And the ammunition needs to be stored separately and also locked. If we can do that with all the guns, then, um, the death rates from all these tragedies will definitely lower. Um, and we want people to know that hiding a gun is not securing a gun. Uh, if it's in a nightstand, you know, the kids aren't supposed to go in that room. Kids know where your guns are, okay? And just like they know where other things are that you hide, Christmas presents or Hanukkah presents or whatever, they know where they are and they get into them. We did it. I did it. My father used to keep a loaded shotgun in our closet, uh, in his closet. And I remember once we were, uh, having some friends over, the parents went out to dinner. We, the kids were playing hide and seek. And I went and showed all the kids where my dad's loaded gun was and told them not to play with it. I thought I was being responsible. But what the responsible thing would have been is if my dad had not had a loaded shotgun in his closet. So, and then we want people to, um, model good behavior, uh, to make sure that your gun is secured. Uh, one of the things that we do, um, at Moms Demand Action and with our Be Smart tables when we're having a table event, whether it's Juneteenth or Pride or, I'm just trying to think of the recent festivals that we've had, Wear Orange event that we had, um, we give out gun locks. We give out cable locks and, um, for free. And if anybody here needs a gun lock, just see me because I noticed that my, uh, backpack with it there was pretty heavy and I realized it was because it had so many gun locks in it. Um, so we give out gun locks. We want you to model, um, good behavior. Uh, if you take your kid out hunting with you, you know, talk to them about how to walk behind you. Don't ever walk in front of a gun. Um, just that type of thing will keep accidents from happening. And then, to me, this is one of the most important things. Before you send your kid over, um, to someone else's house, ask how they have their guns secured. We just, there are so many guns out there that, um, we just assume that everybody has a gun. That's just the way to, to do it. And just say, um, just in conversation, you don't have trouble telling someone that your kid has peanut allergies. Please, I'm, you know, little, little Suzie has peanut allergies, so please don't give her peanut butter cookies or give her a peanut butter sandwich or, uh, John is afraid of dogs. Do you have any dogs at your house? Oh, and how do you have your guns secured? Just assume they do. And if they tell you they have it locked up, it's unloaded and they store their ammunition separately, also in a lot, um, safe, then you know that's a, that's a safe place for your child to play. But if they say, oh, I keep my gun on the top shelf in the closet and the kids can't get up there or I keep it under the bed, um, you want to have the play date then at your house. And this is not just for little kids. Um, I have a friend whose 17-year-old son, um, went to a friend's house. They went out to a barn and they found a gun and they started goofing around with it. And he's dead. The child is dead now. And that's, um, you know, one of those hundred, um, unintentional shootings. I mean, he didn't mean to go there and die that day, but he did. Uh, so make sure you ask. I don't think we need to practice asking. That's what that slide is. So, and then recognize the role of guns in suicide. Most people who attempt suicide don't die. But 90% of the suicide attempts with the gun does result in death. And I can tell you from, um, personal experience, when I was a senior in high school, I had a friend who was 17 who died in, uh, by gun suicide. And then my high school class president, uh, who was the son of Senator Kay Bailey Hutchinson, uh, our first year in college, he died by gun suicide. My daughter had a friend, um, I think he had a crush on her, was constantly calling her and texting her. And, um, I was, we were living in Texas in the time when I was driving her up to Oberlin College. She'd never been to sleepaway camp before and I was leaving her 1,200 miles away. And she got, um, a text from this boy and he said, why don't you text me back anymore? And she was like, oh, I'll text him back later. And then he left another message or texted her again, said, call my sister and ask about me. We stayed in Centerville, Ohio that night at a friend's house and she came running into my room the next morning and said, mommy, mommy, Benji's dead. He had gone to his comic, his dad's comic book store, gotten the gun out of the safe because he had access to the gun in the safe and he died by gun suicide. Teen suicide happens often. It often happens with our young men. Just, you know, a teenage breakup or a bad grade, you know, not getting into the college that they want to get into or not wanting to, um, you know, take a certain job, that type of thing. Uh, we just really need to recognize what's going on with our youth and secure our guns. And, um, 17% of students in high school has said that seriously thought about, uh, suicide. Another 41% say that they have access to guns, easy access. So when you combine those two things, um, then we have death by gun suicide. So, and there are several different places that, uh, we can go as parents or, or, or children can go to get help. And then T in SMART is for tell, tell your peers. Let's talk about it. Uh, if every, if every parent in the school is asking, you know, how do you secure your guns? It may dawn on some people that they need to secure their guns. And, um, and we make it everyday conversation that makes it easier to talk about. So that is our, um, Be Smart presentation, to secure your guns at home, model good behavior, ask about, uh, unsecured guns in other homes, recognize the role of guns in suicide and then tell your peers. And what, um, I guess my ask for the board is that you do a, a notification resolution and I put that on, on your there as an example that you can do to send home to all the parents, you know, maybe the first or second week of school, when it happens, to let parents know how important, um, secure storage is. And then there's also an example of, um, a letter that you could send home that you can ask the parents to sign. And, um, we're just thinking that would keep our communities much safer. And, um, so that's my ask. I also added, and this has not so much to do with, um, our Be Smart program, but I also added two examples from Cleveland and from Cincinnati, their resolutions not to, uh, arm teachers and staff. And I know that's further on your agenda, but I just wanted y'all to have that in case, you know, you'd like to see how other schools have done it. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
I did have a question. Have any of the, uh, local school districts adopted this, um, notification resolution? Any, in, like, close to us?
Not close to us. I am talking tomorrow with the superintendent of Avon Lake. And we are working, um, with someone in Midview Schools to do the same thing. Um, this has become, I guess, you know, since Uvalde shooting and of course we had Parkland, we have Sandy Hook and, you know, all the others. Uh, actually, at our Wear Orange event, which is our, um, awareness event that we have about gun violence, it's the first weekend in June, um, we named all the schools where there've been school shootings and I believe it was 254. So this is, this is an occurrence, a common occurrence. And I know the, the kids are worried about it. So y'all could be the first in this area, in the county. If Avon Lake doesn't get to you, you get to it before you.
We just do it, yeah.
But we do have other school districts in Ohio who have definitely done it. I could get a list of those for you if you want.
And you provided an example from Cincinnati. So Cincinnati Public Schools?
That example, I believe, is for not arming teachers.
Yeah.
And staff.
One from Cleveland is also not arming teachers.
Yeah, that's what they, Cleveland and Cincinnati, that's like, kind of, that was sort of a little separate.
As an example?
Right.
Okay. Well, I will certainly ask that we put this on our agenda for our August meeting and that we adopt the resolution, so.
Great. And if you have any questions, you know how to reach me. I'll be happy to answer.
That's great.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Laura.
We can't hear you, David.
Steve, what happened?
No, he muted himself.
I muted myself off.
All right.
Um, I'd also remind the board that we do have a policy, um, 7217 regarding weapons. Um, this policy provides information of whoever's authority to carry a firearm in a school, which is state and federal agents. Also, those are authorized by, um, certain people can be authorized by the district. This Gun Safety Initiative is not, um, this is not supporting House Bill 99, which we'll talk about later. So I just want to remind the public that this is not supporting House Bill 99.
Thank you.
Um, 2122, End of Media Communications Update. Um, Melissa, I've been doing, been our, our part-time public relations person for almost two years within a district. She has been instrumental in keeping our social media accounts updated, bringing back the Oberlin Community Newsletter, um, support. She was very, um, supportive and instrumental in getting, um, Kurt Russell recognition as state national teacher of the year. That involved communications with the White House, to, um, local newspapers as well, and also covering our district activities as well. She, she would like to provide a communications update this evening. Melissa?
I'm reading them off. For the Board of Ed, um, to allow me to speak tonight. Um, like Dr. Hall said, my name is Melissa Linderbrink and I am the PR coordinator for Oberlin City Schools. Um, my role is to let the public know what great news is going on at Oberlin and what's been going on. I gave the board all of my data. I could easily give this to everybody as well.
Well, you, you need to speak into the mic not only for us, but for the people at home.
Okay. There we go. Um, just a little background. Um, when I first came to Oberlin City Schools, um, back in 2020, we didn't really have a large social media presence. And so I, my, one of my, um, plans was to go ahead and increase that. Um, at the end of June 2022, we have over 1,000 likes, which was a huge milestone for me to meet. Um, and we have 1,245 page followers. From July 1st to June, July 1st, 2021, to June 14th, 2022, there were 107,379 people who were reaching Oberlin City Schools through our Facebook account. Um, as for Twitter, um, June 2021, we had 216 followers. June 2022, we have 353 followers. Um, we have an estimated, from 2021 to 2022, um, 50,000 people reached Oberlin City Schools through our Twitter account. And the newest account that we have, um, that was something I implemented when I first got here, per Dr. Hall, was, um, an Instagram account. So many of our students are always on Instagram. Parents and faculty and guardians are always on Facebook and Twitter. Um, so Instagram was something I really wanted to push for. So far, um, we have 315 Instagram followers, which is 3,510 people reached Oberlin City Schools through that account. Um, still trying to get that one going. Uh, my goal is to get that one going as well. Um, and then we also have a blog site that I'm in charge of. So far, the blog site has seen 177 published posts since I created it in July 2020. Um, just to give you a little bit of information here, um, we did really great this year with the local print and broadcasting companies reaching, uh, coming out to Oberlin. We had 38 stories in The Chronicle. That was including two videos and two full-page features. 41 stories in The Morning Journal, 56 stories in The Oberlin Tribune and eight stories in The Oberlin Review. That's the collegiate newspaper on campus. Um, broadcast media, Channel 3 came out four times, Channel 5 twice and Channel 8 once. And then we also have other media outlets. Um, a lot of this came from Mr. Kurt Russell, winning national teacher of the year and state teacher of the year. So he was on CBS This Morning. He was at the White House that was livestreamed. He was on PBS. Um, and then if you Google him, last I looked, there were like four million results. It's crazy. If you type in like just Kurt Russell, you're going to get the movie star. But if you type in Kurt Russell Oberlin, it's like 11 pages or more on Google. It's just astronomical, um, what he has done for not only the community, obviously, but for the school district as well. So what do these numbers mean? So many school districts in Ohio I know of, you know, usually during the summer months, June and July and half of August, they are on break. Um, I feel like Oberlin can't do that and we shouldn't do that. Just because school is off doesn't mean nothing is happening. Um, you know, so far in June, we have had, um, our summer enrichment program. We have had the algebra experience at the high school. I know that we're doing some stuff at the middle school. I got some photos today, I think from Jay. Um, I'm not really sure who, but you know, there's so much going on that we can't just be quiet for those three months. And our families deserve to know what's going on. Plus, for what's coming up, we have to gear, for example, I was talking to, uh, Matt from AVI today. We have to push for the families to fill out these forms for the free and reduced lunches. So many of them wait to the last minute to do that and so we need to be on top of that. Um, and so that's really what the point of social media is for me right now in the summertime, is just to bust school supply lists. Um, so you know, we just, we always need to keep letting people know what, what's going on. Um, I did want to, um, highlight a couple of things that I'm looking to do. Um, I would like to do something, have a meeting or some sort with Mr. Russell, kind of do like a where in the world is Mr. Russell? Kind of like where in the world is Carmen Sandiego? Um, just because people want to know where he is and what he's doing and, you know, just because he's not in district anymore doesn't mean he's not in district anymore. Um, you know, so many people want to know what's going on with him. Um, I want to create a hashtag for him that we can let him know about, that way he can tag us into it. Looking to do like different social media days. I know my Way Back When Wednesday has been a huge hit. Unfortunately, we're starting to run out of years. Um, so I'm starting to think of what we can go ahead and do with a Wednesday. Still, like I've been doing, um, pop into the schools once a week, twice a week, whenever, um, you know, to take photos. It's easier when teachers and faculty see me. Uh, you know, I just pop into a door, I take a picture and I'll send them an email, you know, what did I pop in on, if I don't know? Um, and they're really supportive with letting me know what, what they were doing that day. And then also, you know, to continue, um, highlighting what our social workers are doing, student pupil services, um, our IB program, our STEM program, the musical department, visual for arts, you know, just to let these factors, you know, know what, let people of Lorain County and beyond know what Oberlin is doing. So, we're doing great so far. Any questions?
I, I have to say, Melissa, I'm glad I get to say it to your face now. I really appreciate the fact that you're part of our district.
Thank you.
That, that there has been a market increase in traffic, in awareness. People know your name. People say, hey, did you, did you tell Melissa about that? I mean, I, your name comes up an awful lot and I think it's an excellent, uh, development for us and we really appreciate what you are bringing in enthusiasm and enthusiasm and in talent, so.
Thank you. And I could, and I just wanted to say, you know, being a part of Oberlin City Schools, um, it's been incredible to have, you know, during COVID, it was kind of hard, but I came in, you know, when nobody knew who I was. Had the masks on, couldn't see who I was. I was still trying to, you know, do face-to-face contact as much as allowed. Um, but, you know, so I'm excited to see what the next year brings. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yep.
Um, next we have Jim Ives. Would like to provide a facilities update to tell us where we are so far. Mr. Ives?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Hall. Good evening.
Good evening.
I bet.
I bet you were surprised when you came in and have seen the work that has happened here at Oberlin Elementary. That's probably the largest, uh, update that we have. The, uh, Blacktop Playground is going, uh, very well.
Can we step on it today?
You can, you can. So, go check it out tonight. It's sloped very well. I mean, it, it's, uh, probably the way it should have been designed in the beginning when you go out there. It's beautiful. You'll see the, uh, patch of grass that's been taken up here, and they've relocated those trees to the, uh, side of the playground here. But they're getting ready to do the asphalt next to this south side playground. So, uh, you'll see it on, that's, that's the dirt you see.
Is that getting fenced, Jim?
Yes. So there will be a fence to keep balls from going and kids going towards the playground, or to, I'm sorry, towards the parking lot. So there will be a fence to keep it that way. There won't be a fence against the sidewalk area, so it'll be kind of open to the sidewalk. So, and then the fence in between the two, we're keeping, since it's already there. So. Uh, the other thing, Langston, uh, we are waiting, at Langston, the masons are there, and we're waiting on permits with the city. So they are there, ready to go. Uh, we, we're still waiting on permits. We, we've been ready to go since last Wednesday. So they're staged, ready to go. So, um, that will, uh, be done again in about three weeks from the time they start. So we are really pushing for that. The steel is in, um, the bricks, we looked at those. So it looks like materials are not going to be an issue. So. Eleven-month walkthrough coming up next month with, with this building. So, uh, one of the last things, uh, maybe the last thing with this building is for the, uh, construction services and the architect. And Dr. Hall and myself and Dan, we'll do an eleven-month walkthrough with the building to make sure punch list items have been taken care of, any outstanding items, uh, before we're looking at the year warranty. So that takes place July nineteenth. And we'll do a walkthrough, and we've been adding items and working on those pretty quickly. So. Uh, it's been nice, Green Space has had Braden Kava in the building, so he's moved back in to supervise the construction of the playground. So it's been good to have him around again, because we've been bending his ear for lots of other little things around. So. With that, uh, we've got, Mad, Mad Factory's gonna use the, um, auditorium at the high school again here in July. So, uh, the buildings are being cleaned, washed, waxed, repainted. You know, we're doing lots of things that, I can't thank our head custodians, custodians of district maintenance enough. They are already slinging a lot of wax on the floors and, uh, doing our best not to, uh, get in the way of summer school and Safety Town and the, uh, the ABA, um, camp down in the preschool room. So the buildings are being used.
Did we get the air conditioning fixed in the auditorium?
So yes, the air conditioning is fixed in the auditorium. We had to bring an electrician in too to, to do some wiring changes. But it's running right now, and I told Nina Fisher, we'll go across our fingers that she has it for. That's Mad Factory.
That sucker will get hot.
And, and we had some air conditioning issues in here yesterday. So we've got the air conditioning running in here too, so.
Can you get me the information about the permits that are being held up?
So I don't know if they're being held up. They were, they were, uh, so the first time they were submitted.
I'm sorry, the permits that are delaying our ability to perform the work?
The, the first time that they were submitted, they were not stamped. That was in June something. They, they needed to be stamped. No, by the construction, uh, company. So then they were stamped, uh, by TDA as well and resubmitted. And they were sent out on June fourteenth. So I think they were submitted before that, but I talked to Bill at the city, and he said they were sent out on fourteenth. I spoke with him again, uh, this week, and he thought that they would be here at the end of last week. So. We're trying. Okay?
Appreciate that.
Questions?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Playground, Playground was pretty good. Um, thanks for sending the photos over. Appreciate it. Uh, the city zoning, um, fell. Just to give our board an update, um, we did cancel our executive session, also the community update as well. Uh, we're still, we will still continue our conversations with the College City and Land Trust. Um, so we have some meetings coming up this week and next couple of weeks here. Um, and we spoke to a couple of entities already, so we're still, um, in conversations with them, um, to determine our next steps. That concludes my report.
David, um, did we spend any money doing, uh, evaluation of those plots?
Yes, yes, of the, um, the college property?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I believe also the college, um, also had, uh, did their due diligence on Eastwood property as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Close my report.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Hall? All right. Uh, I need a motion for board action items A through D.
Get that bomb. In stereo.
I know. It was so cute.
All right. Dr. Hall, do you have them in front of you?
Do you have them in front of you? Do you have the agenda in front of you?
Yes, mm-hmm. Um, I'm sorry, I was just getting at, uh, Mrs. Kalowski, uh, went to the wrong office, and she'll probably show up at Tammy Kalowski. And she went home, and she'll show up at the August, um, meeting.
Okay.
So, um, so we'll see her then. Um, Board Items A is approved of the May twenty-fourth regular session, um, minutes. Item B is approval of the substitute House Bill ninety-nine resolution. This is a resolution that states, um, the boards have authority of assigning people to carry firearms within a school. This resolution states our board, um, if approved, that our board is not, um, in the, willing to do that piece by allowing, uh, authorizing, um, will not be authorized, will not authorize, um, firearms for daily firearms to staff members at this time to, um, to allow to walk around a school. We'll continue with our practice of, um, our policy where safety officers are permitted to do that. So this is stating that House Bill ninety, House Bill ninety-nine resolution that Oberlin City Schools will not have teachers, other employees who are non-employed as safety and security officers, will not be authorized to be, um, armed with daily weapons in the schools. Item C is approved of the Opsy Revised Floater Position MOU. Let's continue our Opsy Per- Permanent Substitute Position for the District. This has been very, very helpful, uh, for the District. To position covered areas from cafeteria worker to lawn, field maintenance, um, to openings that we may have. This is, um, in done collaboration with, um, the Opsy Union. Um, it's been very, very helpful, um, last year, and we'd like to continue that on for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We also have, um, added on to House Bill five eighty-two to the floor as well. Um, Anne gave some background on that as well, and we'd like to have approval of Items A through D.
Let's see, ninety-nine in here for you to sign. Is it just not in the right place? Okay, okay, go. Are there questions for anybody? David or me? All right, call the roll.
Skadson?
Yes.
Miss Steagle?
Yes.
Miss Maka?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes. Right, I need a motion for treasures, Items A through D.
Don't move.
All right, um, A report. We balanced the month at sixteen million eight hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Or outstanding warrant checks were seventeen thousand one ninety-eight sixty-five, and there was no other, um, outstanding issues. The, um, the general fund is right where the five-year forecast has projected it.
Income is up. Like I said last month, it has fallen back down since we did revise the five-year forecast to a hundred.
Expenses are still, were at the end of May, eighty-five point three, or eighty-four point eight nine percent. Leaving us with a cash balance at the end of, end of May at nine million twenty-four dollars, twenty-four thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. We also had outstanding encumbrances of close to four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the general fund. After the Nexus money that the board has put in a reserve capital and our three months budget, we ended the month at five million four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars carryover. Um, the building project, like Jim said, is wrapping up. We look at all funds. Bond levy, we did, um, sell our notes. Um, we did pay off five hundred thousand out of the debt fund. Um, so that's why you're seeing four million dollars. It's not, part of that was, um, the two million dollars worth of notes that we, or two point five million dollars of notes that we sold, um, brought that money up. So that's part of the income. That's not what the bond issue is bringing in. So the bond issue brings in close to one point two million. And then we sold those notes for the two point five to make up that revenue. We still do have, at the end of May, for the building fund, we still had two million dollars encumbered. That's down to closer to a million six, I think is what we'll end the year with, which still needs paid off. So we still have a lot of people that haven't been paid off until after the eleven-month walkthrough. So get them to come back and fix whatever they need to fix back.
Yep.
So, okay.
Are you gonna say anything about the third line on the all-funds report?
Oh, the lunchroom. Yes, um, I was gonna wait until that's.
Okay, well, you can, you can do it later on. That's fine. Okay. I'm just, I'm just, you know.
I've, I've got the update today, so we'll have the final number. So.
Okay, good.
Next on the agenda is approval, the next is that. Yes, um, normally we do transfer money to the food service and athletic fund. This year, we're gonna end food service with close to twenty-four thousand dollars positive.
Positive?
Positive.
Wow.
I need like bells ringing and like confetti.
Very good year. We're hoping that usage or participation doesn't drop next year. If we can get participation to stay where it is, it should be very favorable. I did meet with AVI today. They are projecting, they went back to two thousand nineteen's numbers of participation, and we're looking at probably close to twenty-five thousand dollar deficit if we drop back to those levels. So. I don't see us dropping all the way back, because I think kids enjoy eating, so.
Yeah. Well, I think, so, so let's pause. So we've, we have a different food company.
Yes.
We have had free meals. We need to get those forms in that Melissa talked about. So, so I, I think that it is, it is going to be an interesting year next school year, because we had, they have free meals through September.
No, it stops now. Um, well, anybody that, what they did is they went back to two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and if you are free and reduced, then you will get that at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
So we will contact those people to let them know that they can still eat free for them through September, but they need to fill out a new form. And we'll be contacting everybody to try to get.
And anybody can fill out a form the day one of school and get approved.
We're gonna do that prior to school, but yes.
Well, you're right.
And we have it electronically. They can go right on, pay for it, and fill it out right there.
And so I, I just want to remind people, those forms pay for your lunch, and they bring money directly into the school. With, with a food company like this, well, anytime you, you're serving food, there's a flat cost for having the employees here. And so we need the volume. We need people wanting to eat here. And so if you're eligible, we, we want you to fill out this form and, and bring the money into the school, help balance that cost across. So please.
Child doesn't want to put the school lunches, want feedback to make it better.
Yes, absolutely.
The year that we're going back to, is that the year that Eastwood and Prospect had free lunch breaks? So do all of those, so will the students at the elementary school, will they all carry over or no?
That I don't know. I'll have to find out, because I don't think they will, because they're going, since neither school, since we've combined, they don't qualify. So they would have, we still had people back then filling out forms, but very few.
Very few did it, because they didn't need to.
Yes.
So whether you think you need it or not, if you qualify or not, fill out the form.
Thank you. And it also.
It's leaving money on the table. It's leaving money on the table that we have to pay out of the general fund if we don't.
And beyond that, if you do not know if you qualify, you're leaving money on the table because you must. So you're getting paid for it.
We'll, we'll bring pom-poms next month.
I need a t-shirt.
Form's done.
Next under my topic is, um, temporary appropriation for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. These fall pretty much in line. Um, they are down from previous years because capital projects, funds is down. It totals twenty-five million fifty-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
And the board, if you have any questions, I'm not gonna go through all of the funds, but if you do have questions, let me know. And once this is approved, I'll file it with the county auditor to get our certificate. Next, we have a ton of donations. We have Rotary Club of Oberlin for a hundred and two dollars, senior class two thousand twenty-two. Ohio High School Drama Club disbanded the parents group, so they have.
It's Oberlin.
Or Oberlin, sorry. Oberlin High School, no.
Yeah, but not Ohio.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, Oberlin. I, I'm sorry if I said Oberlin. But they donated, they gave, they closed their bank account, so that was fifty-eight hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents, and we put that into drama clubs. Sarah Yoder donated three hundred and fifty dollars for hygiene kits. The Nord's Corporation donated ten thousand dollars to the Kurt Russell Scholarship. We had a nominist donations of fifty dollars to the Oberlin High School Black Student Union. Um, Elizabeth Elrod, thirty dollars for flowers for the Board of Education planners. Anelia Day, four hundred dollars senior fees. Marion Richard McKee, two hundred and ten dollars senior fees. Elizabeth William and Robert Colt Calhoun, sixty dollars to the track banquet. Adam and Heidi Freeze, thirty-one dollars and eighty-five cents for senior fees. Jake Baron, twenty dollars senior fees. And then John Sanderson paid off the rest of the senior fees for one thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and forty cents.
All right.
I, I was so touched by the response to that. I mean, like, these kids couldn't graduate. They wouldn't get their diploma if they.
Outstanding fees. And so our community stepped up. You know, we, we talked about Tammy earlier. This is another amazing way that this community has just shown up for our kids, so.
Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, Bob, because I emailed you with lots of questions this week, and you got back to me very quickly every time.
Oh, no problem. Thanks.
All right. There's no additional questions? Call the roll.
Skadson?
Yes.
Miss Steagle?
Yes.
Miss Maka?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes. All right. Now we need a motion for superintendent consent items A through J five.
Don't move.
Item A is approve of twenty-two, twenty-three middle school career technical waiver. This is an annual recurrence, um, for the district. This states that the district will not implement career tech courses for seventh and eighth grade students at the middle school. Item B is approved of the twenty-two, twenty-three education alternative service agreement. It all is an alternative education program for our students that we utilize. Item C is approval to purchase property and casualty insurance, um, had an increase. I'm not sure if Bob wanna comment on that or not, with the property casualty insurance.
Source is a, um, consortium that, right now, I think we have two hundred and twenty-three school, the two hundred and thirty school districts. Um, we do provide property fleet liability. Um, we did see a twenty percent increase, and most of that actually because property went down, um, is due to the cybersecurity issues. If any, if you haven't heard, they have skyrocketed. Some districts are being hit with two hundred thousand dollars just for cybersecurity. Just for cybersecurity. Um, Sorsa was level two, get everybody covered, that was under their policy, they're just at different levels depending where their security is. So, we haven't been notified back, there's three different levels, um, and once I hear, I'll let Steve know what we need to do to get the tier three.
Right.
Um, but Steve and I. Like, what is this? I have no clue.
Yeah.
Very adept, it was like nine pages long, so.
It's no joke, though, I mean.
Don't wanna get hit with. So that's, that's really why the cost, before this year, um. Since we are a consortium, we have built up owner equity in the Sorsa, and they were using owners' equity to pay for cyber. But our bill went from a hundred and forty thousand to over three hundred and ninety thousand. So, we got a small portion.
Yeah.
Thanks, Bob, item D is approved of a twenty-two, twenty-three mental health, the Mars Board, um, Lorraine County Agreement. The Mars Board is a list of agencies like La Cada, Belfair, Norwood, Applewood, they provide services and support for our students and. Oberlin City Schools. Item E is approved of following increase in lunch and breakfast prices, effective for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Bob probably can elaborate more on it, however, since I've been on a, since it's been superintendent of district, I don't recall us ever raising our prices and. Um, with everything going up, I'm sure that's had a lot to do with it as well.
Yes, um, and a lot of it's set by the federal government, adult prices, um. If you want to participate in the federal government program, to get our reimbursement, adult prices have to go to four seven five. And then the student, then they have a formula that you have to fill out, and ABI has done that, and these are the minimums that we are allowed to charge. So we've set the prices at the minimums that we are allowed to charge.
I think that's, that is the key.
Yes.
So these are the minimums in order to get the federal funding that we want the forms for. Okay, circle, okay.
Okay, item F is approval of James Knight Consulting Culture Humility Proposal for Professional Development on for the district. Several of our staff members have attended Dr. Knight's workshop last school year, um, he'll provide ongoing training for staff throughout the year, the school year. Um, the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, including our administrators, who work on restorative practices, cultural assistivity and biases. Um, the district has purchased Dr. Knight's book for staff members as well, so those will be ongoing professional development for the year, school year during our PD days. And also he'll attend staff meetings and um, our administrative retreat too, to provide. Um, information and PD for all of our staff members and our ministry, including our administrative staff. Um, this is a second stage, our restorative practices piece, um, that we work with the union on. So we'll continue with the sort of practices, but we also wanna implement culture humility and biases training as well.
And it's grant funded.
Yes, grant funded as well. Um, G has proved a bus maintenance shared service agreement with New London, um, this is a shared service agreement we've. Actually done for last couple of years, have saved us um, a, a large amount of money. Um, to continue our agreement with New London, which we have shown a great reduction, bus maintenance costs, our relationship with New London. Um, school district has been phenomenal, um, far as incoming to pick up our vehicles, to um servicing our vehicles, to trading in vehicles. Um, it's been a great partnership with them.
Can you, Dr. Hall, can you give a little bit more detail as to how we're saving money, like, are we not having to hire? Or um, pay mechanics, or like, how does it, how are we getting these savings?
Yes, they, they have three mechanics there.
Okay.
So, and that's, and they have the bus garage, so. We, we provide a, the old white van that we used to have the maintenance guy driver on, and we provide that for them to drive up here. They do a lot of fixes if they can right in the parking lot, so they'll replace light bulbs, that sort of stuff, work on. Electrical issues right in the parking lot, and if they have to take a bus, then they'll bring up two people in the van and. You take a bus back.
Okay.
Just from the person they were using prior to this, I mean, the rates, as I showed you, have shrunk.
Right, and so then are we paying a portion of that cost, or do we pay as we?
They, they bill us, they bill us um, per incident, per administration, and then we pay, and then they ticket everything. So we pay um hourly rate, this is our hourly rate, we buy all parts.
Okay.
So we're not paying a surcharge for them to buy parts, so we have accounts set up for them to go buy parts, and then we pay those vendors directly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I, I, so they did provide us with some of the data, so. The high point of our bus expense was back in the twenty fifteen, sixteen school year, when we spent a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. In repairs, now, we've also, we've purchased some new buses, we've improved the fleet, but. The repairs and parts last year was just over thirty thousand, so.
Yeah. It's just huge savings compared to our, our previous arrangements we had.
Yeah.
Also, when we trade in vehicles too, they, they strip down the vehicles and take things off to make sure that we get a maximum from the vehicle that we have. Everything that we need off of them, then we traded a vehicle in as well, so they saved us, that's a cost savings as well. Um, they do a great job for us.
Yep.
Item H is approval to follow professional service agreement, these are summer um trips and summer activities that we have going on from a city. Collaboration with a city, with basketball program, to Northern Ohio Youth Orchestra Program, to Common Grounds. And our bus drivers provide transportation for them.
And have the common ground part of this contract started, or?
Yes, they've already made a payment.
Okay.
My great, the camp started. Beginning of June.
Yeah, because it's dated, the first date is June twelfth, so I was just wondering, okay.
Item I is approved a second reading adoption of following policies. Um, that stated before, seven two one seven is a property is a weapons policy revised, that's an update. That's just merely an update stating that um, not just um our state law enforcement, our state and federal law enforcements. Will be able to um, carry course, carry firearms into the buildings if we need to as well, they have authority to do it. Item J is personnel reports. We have a few resignations. Julian Bakers, um, Lynn Nizak, who caught us by surprise, um. Lynn said he didn't, he did not want any recognition when he retired, so he kinda held off on a little bit. So we're giving all the recognition out in uh plaques, and he did not want any of that to be acknowledged, um. Even when we had our faculty and staff, our retirements, he would not say anything until. Um, he sent an email out directly after that, almost a day after that, stating that he was retiring, so he kept it real secretive until um. Until the last minute.
I hear the, the picnic that happened for the, the band on Sunday went very well, so.
So like the resignations, we have some um, Nick Sicola, who's leaving as well, to our administrative position in another district. Uh, Megan Gaffaro is actually leaving for another position within the district as well. Two is some changes positions. Item three is leave absence. Item four is employment, um, I wanna go over with the community and also the board, the hiring process as well again. Um, candidates engage in interview with teachers, administrators, and sometimes community members. They're asked anywhere between ten to fifteen questions during an interview process, so the candidates actually go through a, uh, for teacher interviews. Um, will have teachers, administrators, and other people on air, and the most of our administrative team, our central office team is not on that. Um, interview team, um, myself, I don't really see the candidates till the end of this process. Um, each candidate is ranked on a scale by their interview team, the sheets are calculated by an interview team member. Um, so candidates may go through a second interview at the building level, some teachers are required to teach a mock lesson, depending on a grade level. The mock lesson could be in a supervised regular classroom, or we have um, ask students to say after school at the high school to simulate a class. To have the teachers actually go through a lesson for them. Um, the top two candidates are sent to the superintendent for a final interview, in order of the interview team preference. I use the interview to the top two candidates with another central office staff members, um, and they're selected from there. So they go through um, about one, two, about three, three interviews. Um, and depending if it's closer or not, I may interview them twice, so they may go through three to four interviews before they are hired in Oberlin City Schools. Um, district has been working very hard to hire new teachers, our teachers and administrators have put in many hours to select many of these candidates. I'd like to thank them for putting in the long hours to ensure we have great staff members, um, our teachers say after school, I know our AD interviews went from. Three o'clock, probably a seven o'clock or eight o'clock at night. Um, so we're selecting, and there, those teachers and administrative staff put the long hours in to make sure we had the right candidate for them. And we are filling positions out with, um, as you can see, um, with local and um, some diverse candidates. We have a great pool. We have Bryce Johnson, will take over for our new athletic director position, um, I believe Bryce is an audience, if you'd like to say a few words as well. Um, he'll be, he'll be taking over for John Carter, and he's already been um, starting work with John and work with the college as well.
Yeah, I, I'll just keep it short, um, for those who don't know me, uh, Bryce Johnson, uh, born and raised, my mother was a school teacher here for like twenty something years. Um, at Eastwood, um, we are community members, kids go to school here, uh, have been active in youth sports coaching. So just looking forward to um, working with, with everyone in the community, um, the board, our admin. Um, I, I, I'm, I'm very confident in what will be done, I've just been telling community members that, uh, it's gonna take everybody. So I, I, I'm confident in my work, but to, to, to do this, it's gonna be the whole community that's gonna have to get involved, um, and it's been a really good response. Um, I think everyone is just excited, um, just for things to continue to go well, um, with, with Carter and the things he did over the last six years and. Ty Stillman before that, so I think the excitement's just continued to, uh, to grow, so looking forward to it and um, getting ready to get started.
Glad you're here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bryce. Uh, we do have remainder placement for our band director, um, we did our interview process, we have narrowed down three candidates, and uh, we have Ryan. Jacking, um, will be working with Mr. Zizak, Nizak, and he'll be taking over our band, great young energetic um candidate. Phenomenal, um, phenomenal teaching staff who'll make an asset to the high school and also to the elementary as well. To our band program, Margot Fox is a teacher, um, she's actually helped start, bring back Doggy Do to Oberlin. So, um, I started one day and she was very, very um instrumental in trying to get that back going for our community. And really community oriented as well. Supplemental contracts, the district has summer activities occurring for students in grades K twelve, many of these supplementals, um, today will cover our summer instructors. And you can see a list of summer activities going on from intermurials to summer school cafeteria workers, to um, summer instructors. Um, for our summer school. And I close my report, request approval of items A to J five from the board.
Any questions or further discussion? All right, call the roll.
Scottson?
Yes.
Miss Steagle?
Yeah.
Miss Mecca?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes. Comments, discussion, board update. I can tell you the J V S meeting is tomorrow, so I don't have an additional update from J V S. We, we push our meeting back in June so that we can get as late in the month as possible to get everything closed in before two thirty.
I'd like to fill in for Ken for the finance committee, the um, state of Ohio has came, come to a settlement with Nexus. Uh.
Wow.
A little lot lower than where I thought it'd be, um, they have reduced it down, I'm not, some counties are sixty-eight percent, some counties are sixty-nine percent. So, the way public utilities are taxed is they take full construction costs. And then usually they pay on eighty-eight percent of that, and that's what, it's our tax duplicate. What they have decided to do is backdate this till two thousand nineteen, when they first started paying taxes, and they will. Pay sixty-eight or sixty-nine, depending on the county, um, that will be their base amount. And then they will pay eighty-eight percent, they will hit our tax duplicate, um. I have a meeting set up with a, or setting up a meeting with the county auditor to find out where that puts us, they will be paying interest, and they will be. They tender paid, so they paid thirty-nine percent, so. They will make up all that difference, we hope to have that money in by October, they've county auditors, there's thirteen county auditors that have the right to appeal this. Um, I doubt any of them will.
Because it's been drawn on for so long.
Um, so, once they know what they're doing, I will meet with them and get us numbers so that I can. Show you what we can project out, um, they will allow depreciation starting from two thousand nineteen going forward. Um, and I will get all those exact numbers, um, any, when they do work on them, that cost gets built back into the base cost. And then they'll start depreciating that afterwards also, but still for the district, we are still looking at, um. I've projected it out to be close to, it should be one point seven million dollars per year, and then that, that number will continue to drop. Um, but we have set all that money aside to use for hopefully that, okay, this six through twelve building, so.
So just for clarification, you said something about paying out at eighty-eight percent, that's what you were expecting?
No, no, that's, that's.
That's what it's gonna be.
They'll pay eighty-eight percent of the sixty-nine percent.
Got it. Yeah.
You weren't expecting fifty-nine, you were expecting.
I was expecting it to be in the seventies or.
God, yeah.
Mid, mid eighties, but yeah, so. So they originally, when they came through and talked to Oberlin, they had projected close to two point one million dollars to the school. And we're gonna look at probably one point seven.
Got it.
So. But again, that could change, but that's preliminary numbers that I came up with.
All right.
Doing all the calculations that I could with what they've been tender paying, because I don't have all of their bills in front of me.
And that's one point seven million dollars.
Per year.
Per year.
Per year.
Yeah.
Per year, and they will be paying for the first two years five percent, and the next two years is three percent interest on everything that they short paid.
Okay.
So we will get good interest rates for that time period. I can't, we still can't get three percent interest rates.
Right. Other updates?
I don't have an update.
All right, hearing of the public on other items, Mo, did I see you writing your name down? Okay.
Hi, is that, is that working, all right, um, Maureen Simon, uh, thirty-six Morgan Street, Oberlin. Um, I'm here tonight to speak about the change in the law regarding training requirement for armed school staff. As a parent and a taxpayer, I want to thank you for continuing to keep Oberlin schools as gun-free as possible. However, there are still things I think the public should hear and sadly be reminded of, because school boards can change. Culture can change, and memories can fade. We may have a view of teachers being willing to defend their students in the face of danger, and that may be true, but this law is not limited to teachers. It applies to anyone working for a school district, and we need to be honest about the fact that for many people, their job at a school is just that. A job, and that their motivations for carrying a gun might not come from a sense of obligation to the safety of children, but simply because they can. And of course, the sad fact is that we cannot claim to know our teachers, many schools describe their staff as being like a family. But a staff is not a family, and even families are flawed, and can harbor dark, dangerous secrets. It was not that long ago when the Oberlin community was faced with the revelation of one of those dark secrets. A teacher at Eastwood was arrested and convicted of child pornography, I don't bring this up lightly or to upset the people. Who had to endure those terrible days. But to remind folks, that teacher had no criminal record and passed the background check. If Oberlin had allowed teachers to be armed, because the fact is, even before this law was passed, there was a way for teachers and staff. To be armed in public schools. He could have gone through the training requirement and would have been, in the eyes of the law, qualified to carry a gun on school grounds. I can only imagine how desperate that teacher was in the days when suspicions and concerns were being raised. Imagine in those desperate times if he had been armed. I know this is an extreme case, but parents and residents and parents need to realize. That you don't know everyone who works for or volunteers for your schools. And you don't know their intentions or their motivations or how things can change in their lives. And I want to say to teachers and staff, as a former teacher and a former union rep. As you negotiate your contracts, regardless of the language that the school district has as part of its culture. You need to think about the kind of work environment you want. You need to think about the language in your contracts. That will keep your work environment as safe for you as possible. Your classroom is your office, and you don't know everyone who comes into your classroom. We can talk about the culture of a school, but the only thing that truly defines that culture is what is written. I sincerely hope that as the years go by, Oberlin schools continues to keep the district as gun-free as possible. Thank you.
Hey, Mo, can, is that copy something that you can give to Bob or do you want?
Thank you.
Thanks.
That way I'll put the whole thing in there.
Thanks, Mo. All right, anybody else? Just dying to. Spend five more minutes with us. All right, our future meetings, we get the month of July off. Our next meeting is August ninth. We have a work session at six P M. And then on the twenty-third, we have our next regular meeting. Both of those will be taking place here at six P M. At this point, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Call the roll.
Miss Scottson?
Yes.
Miss Steagle?
Yeah.
Miss Mecca?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.